I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board together. It's Wednesday, February 3rd, 5:30 probably, 5:32. I would like all, each member of the planning board to introduce him or herself, please. I'm John Fink.
John Delio.
Nelson Gil.
Rick Lyles.
Molly, you're muted.
Molly, good luck.
Okay. Next item of the business is adoption of the minutes from January 6th. Is there a motion regarding the minutes, please?
So moved.
And they, is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise a hand. Okay, thank you. Next item is the final plan review for a major subdivision entitled Patrick's Way for Bridge Twin LLC. The proposal is to create two new residential rental units on the 15.2 acres, tax map 35 lots 20 and 21, located on Patrick's Way. All of the subject property is located in the neighborhood and rural zones. If someone representing the applicant, please.
Steven Salisbury.
Go ahead with just a brief description of the project, please.
Sure, we are, I'll put it up on the screen. We're talking about adding two additional units to a piece of land off the, what was formerly the Eastern Road, now called East Main Street. Kind of across from where Consolidated Communications has a facility. There's an existing road where my pointer is now, there's unit one, unit two, a duplex, three and four. And our proposal is to add five and six further away from the road. Recently, the owner installed a water line under East Main Street, a six inch line for the fire hydrant that's proposed to go in this location, that will go there. The water line's been put in right over here, we'll just extend the service down the shoulder of the road and put the hydrant in the right of way. And the city will take over responsibility for that once we install that. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay. As we left off last time on this matter, the application was found to be complete. This evening, we will look at the merits of the plan and the deficiencies that we find, or not find. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I had one question. There's no subdivision of property within this overall thing, right? So, you know, it's not like unit one could be sold off without further evaluation or something, right?
That's right, we'd have to come back to the planning board to sell them off individually. It's much like an apartment complex will be.
Okay, okay.
I guess I've got a question for Nate, because right now I'm just looking at a screen that says, "A leader in 2020 Gartner Magic Quadrant for Meeting Solutions." I've lost all video. I wonder if Nate can direct me how to get back to the meeting.
Well, it sounds like you might have another app up. So, go to your start menu and click on your Zoom icon again.
I see the other Rick Lyles has showed up.
Okay, I just minimized it, so I guess I can see it now.
Yeah, this is Patrick, I don't think I was sent an invite, so I had to borrow Rex's. So there's the lesser, the lesser Rick Lyles is here.
So Patrick, do you wish to continue as Rick, or would you like us to recognize that you as you?
However, you know, I defer to the judgment of the chairman.
Now your box says Patrick.
There we go, we'll go with that.
Oh, okay. This is a public hearing, anyone may comment on this matter. Carrie, Nate, do we have anyone who wishes to comment?
I don't have any comments, John.
None in Zoom either.
Huh, okay. In that case, the public hearing is closed. What would the board like to do?
I'd make a motion that would approve the major subdivision plan entitled Patrick's Way for Bridge Twin LLC. To create two new residential rental units on a 15.2 acre tax map, 35 lots 20 and 21 located on Patrick's Way. All the subject property is located in the neighborhood and rural zones.
Second.
Is there any discussion, please? Hearing none, all those in favor, please.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Before you move on, you skipped over election of officers, if that's a real thing.
It is, I didn't even see that, okay. I suppose we ought to do it. Excuse me here, I'm just getting myself. Okay. In that case, obviously the officer's terms are up and we need to elect new officers. We have chairman, vice chairman, and secretary.
I'm going to make John Fink for chairman.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a nomination for vice chair?
Well, let's go with John Delio.
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
And for secretary?
I'm Nate Rick Lyles.
I'm willing to give up that exalted rank, by the way.
No, no, too bad. I'll second that motion.
You'll accept it, Rick?
Yeah, sure, what the hell.
And you'll get even with Nelson, right?
Pretty sure.
All comes around.
Shall we vote for the slate?
Yes.
Do you want to go do it individually?
No.
All in favor of these officers, please? Okay. There are no big changes.
Consistency is such an important thing.
There's some truths to that, depends upon the competency of, competency of the consistency, however.
Right.
Yes. Now, skipping to item six, having jumped back to item four. It's a final plan review for a major use subdivision entitled Eight Union Street for Barbara and Dale Joyce. The proposal is to subdivide the interior of the building to create one residential unit, six professional office spaces on a seven tenth acre parcel located Eight Union Street, tax map 137 lot 3. All of the subject property is located in the neighborhood zone. If someone representing the applicant, please.
Steve Salisbury, the applicant. Since our last meeting, I revised the project narrative slightly to emphasize that we're talking about inserting professional offices in this building, so that's clear, that's consistent with the zoning language. What else did I do? I, I want to make it clear, we're talking about a two bedroom B and B without a kitchen. But I've had discussions with staff on that, and to my knowledge, nobody's said that's inconsistent with the life safety codes of the building codes. We can have a two bedroom rental without a kitchen. For the public, I'll pop up the site plan there for me to rise, everybody. This is Union Street after, just after the intersection of Main Street. Bayview Avenue is on the right-hand side of the page over here. This parking lot already exists, there's 20 spaces. We're going to take that down to 19 spaces with the addition of this handicap ramp here. We'll still have more than adequate parking for our proposed uses. I think we're four or five spaces in excess of the minimum parking requirements. That's all I have to say at the moment.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, one for Dwight. Dwight, in the table of use regulations for that zone, allowed use is personal service establishment, which is defined on, if you happen to have your manuals, defined on chapter 14, on page 22. Could you just kind of give me an idea of what a personal service establishment would be? Do you happen to have your manual with you, Dwight?
Yeah, no, I do, I do. Personal services is businesses primarily engaged in providing services involving care of an individual. That could be like a beauty shop or anything where you're, they're going to care for you. So it could be a doctor's office, it could be anything like that. Basically, their primary operation is not to sell a product, although they sell a factory. Like you go to a beauty shop and they may give you a, you can buy a special shampoo or something like that.
Right, I mean, it seems like it's very similar then to the professional and business offices and professional establishment on page 23. I mean, the professional business office, especially home occupation and professional establishment, I mean, the similar, very similar in nature.
And that's correct.
I mean, I would, I would throw out a suggestion for, for the approval, including the approval is because there are some retail, according to the zoning, convenience store could be put in, in the neighborhood zone. So, I mean, I would offer out a suggestion that we accept this with the provision that, besides the apartment, that it be limited to basically what's defined on page, on section 14, page 23, professional establishment, which includes lawyers, accountants, financial advisors, architects. I mean, you could throw in there professional businesses also, which is just above it.
Yes, we do know, John, that we have some work on our definitions to do. In case with this one, when you, when you looked at commercial use, some of the things just, they don't, and like you said, they don't meld good together. So we are going to be, well, staff will be looking at that.
Yeah, I'm just afraid, I mean, I certainly don't doubt Steve and the potential owners and what they want to do, but I think unless we specifically restrict the uses of these, you know, somewhere in the future, the owner could change their mind and put something in that, that we don't feel really fits in that neighborhood.
Well, any, any change of use would have to come through the code enforcement office, but you could also put a restriction on the plan that states what the guidelines, the planning board would like to see.
I mean, that would be my suggestion, I'd love to hear from other members.
The way I read it is that this is a non-conforming use. You know, because professional establishment is related to home occupation. And this really isn't a home occupation, what it really is, is a, is a bunch of offices, which is, which is fine, except that it's not allowed in that zone, really.
Wow.
At the same time, the medical offices that were there previously established that non-conforming use, and this is just a, you know, it's a, it's a similar sort of deal. So I have no problem with this, with this going forward, but I think it needs to be stipulated that this is a non-conforming use, plus the fact that commercial stuff is disallowed in the table under neighborhood, what's allowed in the neighborhood zone.
Well, let me give you some history, if I may.
Okay.
The original owner came to the city, was issued a unconditional use for that to be a commercial use for that office building when it was medical.
Well, a long time ago.
Well, I know, but it's still a grandfathered.
No, 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 I'm just saying that was a long time ago, right? I mean, just clarification.
Well, it was in the, it was nine, in the late 90s.
That's a long time ago to me. But, okay. So what you're saying is that he was issuing conditional use to allow this thing, which is in essence a non-conforming use, way back in 1990. And this is just the same sort of continuation of that same sort of use.
Right.
I think you have to be careful, what's, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you can't expand a non-conforming use, but you can, and you can, you can continue to operate it.
Right, no, no, and he's not, he's not really expanding it because that really relates to the building and the building is the same size, basically. And, and I, and I assume that that would also go for the fact, to the, to the point that it violates the setback requirements as well. But it's always kind of always done that, so I assume that that's a grandfathered in sort of thing as well.
Right, it is, as long as we don't increase that non-conformancy, that's correct.
So, so the deal is, and I think that this needs to be, you know, kind of in the record, whether it needs to be on the plan or not, I don't know, but, but certainly needs to be in the record that, that if we approve this going forward, that was with the understanding that it's a non-conforming use and so forth, blah, blah, blah.
Excuse me, Steve, how many professional offices are being planned?
Six, plus the owner's studio. Or is that included studio?
Well, the studio is a retail use.
It's not retail, it's for the photography studio.
Oh, as in taking photographs?
Yeah, and developing the film and what have you.
And that's, and that's the guy that actually lives upstairs, right?
Yes, correct, that's the owner.
So that, that works as a professional establishment or home use or whatever it's called. So, you know, that's the way you get around the, the photography stuff, I think.
How is this then a minor subdivision?
This is more, it's multiple units. Where before, the doctor, it was her, all her business.
Yeah, but then how is this a minor subdivision? Minor subdivision is four or fewer.
No, I mean, the agenda list is a major subdivision.
It's major.
Oh, what it, okay, because I was looking at, I'm looking at the application, the actual application, project classification, it says minor subdivision.
Yeah, well, initially I thought it was minor because of the, we had two, three different uses, you know, residence and office. I was dividing the uses, but physically this is six offices and two residences.
Yes.
So it's probably major.
Now, the Airbnb is a, it's a rental.
Rental.
It's not a residential unit. Dwight, how do you figure this is in compliance with the zone?
Well, there's.
It's, it's like.
We're not, we're not calling it a dwelling. It's not a dwelling unit, it would be no different than if you would go rent a motel room or a street that not have a.
There is a motel allowed in the zone?
Well, I don't think that one unit would classify it as a motel.
Well, nonetheless, it's a rental unit that is not a residential unit. Or rental units permitted in the neighborhood zone.
Boarding's allowed specifically.
Yeah.
Boarding is allowed, that's probably the closest we can come to a definition, since we don't define what a Airbnb is.
Yes, okay. Further comments or questions?
Another question for Dwight, a lot of them tonight. So you'd said a change in use would have to come to the CEO's office anyway. And I've heard the types of offices that are contemplated to go in to these five units. So if someone in the future were contemplating some sort of retail or some sort of manufacturing, you're saying that would have to come to your office? And would you, in the case of retail or manufacturing, determine that that expansion of the non-conforming use that had been grandfathered would be out of bounds? That would be too much of a stretch?
Then, and that's correct, and our, and our office has the authority to send any issue we have like that for planning board approval. If we get something like that coming in, we're not going to, I'm not going to take the responsibility for it, I'm going to pass that on to you folks.
Okay, so I did just want to mention this evening, we'll, we'll see when we get to the public hearing, if anybody's hanging on with us tonight. But both in the previous session when we looked at this and in the run-up to tonight, we have received through email public comment and the risk of paraphrasing a little bit, my interpretation of those comments were a concern that the, that there could be creep around the, the commercial use of this property. And there was already concern that the number of office spaces versus the number of retail spaces. So I've heard and I understand the grandfathering of the non-conforming use, but also want to reflect back that, that commentary that we've received from the public, that there is a concern in the neighborhood about that sort of growth or expansion around the commercial aspect of the, of the property.
Understood.
One fear I have, Nelson, is if we don't include language in the approval itself, if I'm not mistaken, unless Dwight has changed his mind, he'll be retiring in the, in the near future. And this goes to somebody who maybe has a different point of view from what code does or doesn't do. I think, you know, if we include that restriction on the plan itself, then there is no chance of misinterpreting it.
Let me just jump back for one second, in terms of the, the Airbnb thing, whether that's allowed or not, under the table of use regulations, under lodging, there's two categories, bed and breakfast or hotel motel. And I would argue that a bed, that an Airbnb is basically a bed and breakfast sort of thing, so, and that's an allowed use in neighborhood. So that's not, to me, that's not an issue.
Yeah, bed and breakfast doesn't, it would include meals, would it not?
Good, not all bed and breakfast necessarily have breakfast, though. I mean, the thing is, the Airbnb is now being used as a, as a, as a, as a land use kind of thing. And I don't think that, you know, most zoning owners just don't, or at least the old ones, don't address it in that sort of, in that fashion. They would call it a bed and breakfast or a rental unit or whatever. So I think that, I think the Airbnb thing, and kind of in quotes, is consistent with bed and breakfast. So I don't, I don't.
Okay, in our definition of bed and breakfast, it's any dwelling on which lodging is offered for compensation to persons, either individual, individually or as a family with or without meals. But this is not a dwelling. Unless it is part of the dwelling unit that isn't, that's to be included in this use.
Right now, it's a shared bath and everything, so.
Is it share, is the bathroom shared with the family?
I believe so, is that not correct, Steve?
Yes, right now physically, this is a shared bathroom. That may change in the future, but our plan.
If it changes in the future, would that rental unit still have access to the main dwelling? Careful here. Because if it doesn't, then it's not part of the dwelling unit.
Of course, part of the dwelling unit, it's under the same roof.
Not if it's completely separate from it.
I'm sorry, where, where are you seeing that it has to be within the dwelling unit?
In the definitions.
A bed and breakfast?
Yes, any dwelling in which lodging is.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So if it's not part of the dwelling, then that would not, it seems that we've got a, an interesting interpretation then. If it's completely separate.
Not, but it's not in a separate dwelling. It's a separate part of a dwelling. Right?
If there is communication between the two, I would agree. But if it were completely closed off, then I think we need to look at it a little harder.
I think to confuse it even more. Use it even more, go to page nine and, and read the definition of dwelling unit.
All I can, all I can commit to is what's shown on the plan right now, and they're committed to having that shared bathroom. Future changes would have to get permitted.
We sure do have some sloppy language in this thing.
That is why the universe created new versions.
And our planning boards, unfortunately.
Well, we could have, you know, you know, Rick, we could duck out of this very easily right now, but.
Oh wait, wait a second, right to my right is Ed Behr, why don't we ask it?
Is that an invitation?
That certainly is.
I'm following the discussion, and I guess I want to pose a question first. The agenda calls this a major use. My understanding is that it's actually before you, not for the uses, but for the subdivision aspect of it. And that, if that's correct, then I'm not sure that your discussion about what is or what isn't a professional establishment or this or that is, is germane to whether this project, this building, this interior subdivision gets a nod of approval or not as a subdivision. And then with each individual unit that is filled, it's up to the code officer to determine whether that use is allowed in the district. That's my thought about all of the commercial uses on the property. As for the, the residential aspect of it and the bed and breakfast, your definitions are as good as you'll find anywhere. I mean, I participated in a planning board meeting in Bar Harbor where they, they approved a 31-room bed and breakfast that was built from the ground up, and it has a definition similar to yours. But I do think the chairman has a point that the, as I understand that definition in your ordinance, it's for, it's for a unit within the dwelling. Right now, it sounds like you may have that, but I'm not sure that that's the applicant's, applicant's intent. But again, I guess that would be for the code officer to decide if, if that meets the definitions or not. I just, I don't want, I don't want you to think that, I just don't think that this is anything more than a subdivision. And so I'm not sure that the, the discussion about uses is all that applicable.
Thank you, Ed. I am, I should have thought of that, I didn't, and I am much relieved because now we can just deal with the issue of the subdivision, which is much easier. Anything else from the board? Mark, I see, is with us in, in video, and I assume audio.
Yes.
So what would the board like to do at this point?
Well, I guess I'd have to ask another question, and based on what Ed just said, do we go ahead, is the plan to go ahead and just approve this as a subdivision with no restrictions to it?
The restrictions exist in the ordinance as to what is allowed in the zone.
Yeah, but I mean, that's.
But as, as a subdivision, we're looking at, can. But as, as, as a subdivision, we're looking at can this building be subdivided into the units proposed?
Is that sort of subdivision even. Germanian? I mean, I always do subdivisions as, you know, you have a parcel of land and you cut it up and you subdivide it, right?
It could be subdivision of a, of a building.
Of a building, okay. With, with the same owner?
I think your, your last application was exactly that. It was a, it was a, a two-unit apartment. It was a multi. It wasn't a land subdivision. Your, your ordinance is, is rather unique in that you, you do review commercial properties under your, under the definition of subdivision. Most communities don't, but. You, this is essentially what's known as a developmental subdivision. If you came in and constructed a six-unit apartment building, that would be a subdivision. That would require your review and approval.
Such silence is. I don't know if it's helpful or not. Let me do this. I'll be open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment upon this? Carrie and Nate, do you have anyone?
I have no comments, John.
Nothing from Zoom chat.
Excuse me?
Nothing from Zoom chat.
Okay.
Do you have to read the, the, like Nelson was talking about before, do you need to read the. Comment that was received by email? Do you need to read that into the record or not?
Does someone have it in front of them? I don't have a printout of it. It's not. On this computer.
I have a copy here.
Okay, could, would you please read that then?
Sure. Uh, this was received from Quarantine Howe on Thursday, January twenty-eighth. Via Carrie Taylor. In the city office. To the members of the Ellsworth Planning Board, I am the owner and year-round resident of sixteen Union Street, next door to eight Union Street on the other side of Bayview Avenue. I attended the planning board meeting on January sixth via Zoom, as what happens with eight Union Street is of obvious concern to me. I am grateful to my neighbor across the street, V. Kelly Bellis, at seventeen Union Street for submitting questions prior to that meeting. The meeting of January sixth was very reassuring because the board members brought up the questions I had as well as others. I do not have experience or knowledge in code enforcement and related matters, so I was very happy to see. That the board members took the time to look at this application closely, even asking questions despite it being a preliminary plan review. As one of the next door neighbors, my worry is about how this plan could change the neighborhood and qual- and quality of life that in. The almost ten years I've been here has been pretty quiet and peaceful. And it's important to me and I assume all my neighbors that this continue to be the case, that we keep having a neighborhood that is pleasant to live in. I therefore confirm the points that were brought up during the meeting on January sixth. Point one, I liked hearing that there are limitations on what businesses can be established in the office spaces due to the zoning restrictions and would like. That to be included as suggested in the approval proposal, if approved. Because those not being in there could lead to a precedent or loosening of restrictions for the future. Point two. The fact that the preliminary use is supposed to be residential is important. This was brought up as there is much more office space than residential space in the current application. Point three, the letter dated January nineteenth announcing the final plan review now only mentions one residential unit, which makes me think the application was amended to remove the second. So-called residential unit with no kitchen. The original application stated that this unit would possibly be used in the future as an overnight rental space. Is there a certain. Question, is there a certain percentage of space in the building that needs to qualify as residential? In any case, I would like to thank the planning board for the diligence. They've already shown and bringing up these issues in the preliminary meeting. I trust the board to ask any other pertinent questions and make sure that the outcome of the proposal is what it purports to be, i.e. the owner being in residence. The offices being professional, i.e. the photography studio, gallery, offices for architects, lawyers, et cetera. With all of this being clear in the application that is approved in order to avoid any bad surprises for the neighbors later. Thank you for your work and your time. Signed Quarantine Howe, sixteen Union Street, Ellsworth, Maine, oh four six oh five.
Thank you.
Back on the whole board again.
Comments, questions, further action?
We close the public hearing?
Yes.
And I guess just, notwithstanding what Ed said, I'm. I'm, I'm against approving something with no conditions on it. Just. And not, not to leave it to. Sometime down the future and may go to code enforcement officer and may end up being a, a use that this board is, is. Was, was not happy with.
What would those conditions be?
Just that the, the offices would be restricted to the definition of professional and business offices. I think that's what the intent of the applicant is. I just don't like leaving it open that, that somebody could put a convenience store in here. Dwight saying that the change of use would come to the code enforcement officer, but who knows what happens from there?
Well, you, you could currently put a convenience store in there now.
I know, and that, and that's what I'm opposed to. And I, I think we, we have the right to restrict one there.
John, is this in an attempt to respond to these public concerns? Or are you saying you just don't think a convenience store would fit in the neighborhood?
Well, are you asking me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't think, I mean, if you look down through that, that table, I mean. I mean, is the convenience stores and allowed use, but I, you know, I don't think that's an appropriate use for that location.
I don't think the board had the right to determine that, John.
No, I was just going to come and make that same comment. If it's allowed, if it's allowed in the neighborhood, then. Where in the exact location is not something the planning board. Can make a decision about.
Well, like, you know, you've mentioned that before, John, and I, I would have to disagree. I mean, the manual can I cover every situation? And I think if you go to article one on the general purposes, the general purpose of the ordinance are to, one of them is promote the health, safety and general welfare residents.
But that's what the, but that's what the language after that heading does.
We don't, we don't have the authority to override the, the legislative body that enacted this ordinance. And if, if it's a convenience store is a permitted use in the neighborhood. Then the only one that, the only way that could be changed is not through the planning board. It would have to, the city council would have to amend the ordinance to. To revoke that use. So that, I hear what you're saying, John, but it's not within our authority to do that as a planning board. No, I think one thing I've heard here though is we are, we are. It's our understanding this is a continuation of a nonconforming use as far as these professional offices. Is that what we've? Again, I know, you know, there's a difference here between subdivision of, and these, these permitted uses or nonconforming uses, but. We could potentially note that the board found this to be a continuation of nonconforming uses. And then anyone that comes in to. You know, subsequent owner or, you know, user of the, of the facility of the building would. At least that would be in the record. There'd be, so a future code enforcement officer would be able to point to that.
And the issue with that though is. That was a strict residential zone at that time, Patrick, so they had to get that, that letter from the, from the city. Now, the way the ordinance is written for neighborhood, most of the uses that were not allowed then are allowed now. But I support the concept to bring this back to the council. Because I would, if I was in that neighborhood, I would have much more concern about someone to be able to have a feedlot beside my house in the back field. Where they're bringing cattle and swine and sheep to fatten them up for slaughter. How did it ever get in there? I don't know. But if you read the definition, you definitely wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. And if there's still interest from the planning board. I, I know the, the planning office and the code office and Ignal Development, we're looking at making some changes to definitions. Mike Henge worked really hard on trying to transition the definitions from international building code, which we cannot modify ourselves. To modify ours that all match. So our language follows ordinance to ordinance. So I know the city is going to be taking steps. I think it'd be a good time to planning board. Got in line and say, look, we need some changes on this item, this item, this item.
I certainly agree with that last sentiment.
That's all I get credit for is the last one?
Yeah, well, no. I, I just singled it out for special attention.
Okay.
I know, I mean, there really is a lot of confusion in the real, very real sense because. Commercial uses are disallowed in a neighborhood, right? So if you call this commercial, then it's, then it's a nonconforming use. If, at the same time, a convenience store would be, not that it's being considered, but a convenience store would be an allowed use. You know, I have a little bit of difficulty with allowing, disallowing commercial, but allowing convenience. I'm not sure exactly who draws that line. But I guess my initial reaction was when the application talked about commercial uses, that that is, you know, in somewhere on, on the drawing or wherever it said that. And that to me was the red flag. If it, because commercial is disallowed.
Well, the application, excuse me, Rick, the application now talks about professional offices.
Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, then that's better.
Yes.
But is, is an art gallery. A professional office or is it a commercial use? Will they be selling the art?
No, it's now. A studio, a photography studio where pictures are, are taken, but sales of art are not in that.
Can I ask a question of what the, the fear is of. Having a convenience store as it's been used multiple times? Like, what are we assuming about? The, a convenience store versus a professional business office?
Well.
I can give you some history on that. I think it's important for people to realize. We decided to do the convenience store because we want more pedestrian services available to people. So you have a small convenience store in your neighborhood. You don't have, you can actually walk and get what you need instead of having to drive. And that's what the idea or concept was that was to hopefully work towards getting more pedestrian passageways to the city. So people can easily get to a grocery store instead of trying to head up high street where we don't really have much for crosswalks to get across it.
I see, I appreciate that. And it is actually a good location for a convenience store. And I understand that the neighborhood might not like. That many comings and goings, but what's to say that the same amount of people wouldn't be coming and going from a professional business? If that's the concern.
Well, in this application, a convenience store is not, it's not part of that application. So.
I, I think at bottom here, yeah, these are, you know, issues while, you know, we're considering here again, ultimately. And as Dwight's saying, or something for, to be brought to, you know, potentially the city council. Ultimately to decide, you know, if these uses are or not. Appropriate for our purposes. If we're determining this is, again, to, to Ed's point, you know, we're getting a little far field of subdivision approval. But at the end of the day. If this is a permitted use in the zone. Then I think we did, you know, even aside from that, we're really just focusing whether they've satisfied subdivision. Requirements here in ordinance, which are separate from the use here. So I, I, I just suggest the board focus on that at this point.
So does someone wish to. Discuss it further or is there a motion that someone would like to make?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the final plan review for major use subdivision entitled eight Union Street for Barbara and Dale Joyce. Proposal is to subdivide the interior of the building to create a multi-use property resulting in residential office and commercial space. On a point seven acre parcel located at eight Union Street, tax map one thirty-seven lot three. All of the subject property is located within the neighborhood zone.
May I suggest that we also include in that. Directly from the written application that the mixed occupancy should be professional offices, residents and Airbnb rental.
I'm good with it.
But the commercial snuck its way in there again.
Well, it, it, it says professional, the application for this says professional offices.
But, but what Mark read as the motion had commercial in it.
Maybe Mark would like to. Reward, take out the commercial and put in professional offices, residential, residents with Airbnb rental.
I'm good with that.
John, we actually updated the agenda item. So the, the February third agenda. For eight Union Street does not have the word commercial in it. So.
Says one residential unit and six professional office spaces.
Yes, it does.
So, so I make a new proposal?
Mark, if you would.
Sure. So I make a move to approve the final plan review for a major use subdivision entitled eight Union Street for Barbara and Dale Joyce. The proposal is to subdivide the interior of the building to create one residential unit and six professional office spaces. On a point seven acre parcel located at eight Union Street, tax map one thirty-seven lot three. All of the subject property is located in the neighborhood zone.
Is there a second? Is there further discussion on this matter?
Well, I guess I, unfortunately, I guess I'd have to throw in there. You know, the applicant wanted an Airbnb. Does, does this allow the way the, the motion was read? Does it allow? The occupant of the. Apartment to have an Airbnb? I would say no. Isn't that the purpose of the applicant, Steve?
Well. An Airbnb. Any, any residents can rent out spaces in Airbnb if it's part of a residence. So.
My, my understanding from, from the conversation, just my understanding, probably flawed, is, is the, in the, in the motion, what. Essentially what we're doing is we're reflecting our understanding as a board of the, of the petitioner's. Suggested use. We're not necessarily explicitly allowing or disallowing anything because that's not actually within our, within our authority. I think that point of the conversation is, is. I think essentially where, where I'm stuck. So it's. For the purpose of maybe code enforcement officers in the future who may have to deal with, with issues related to this property. We're, we're trying to be as. As diligent as we can about, about the wording, but we're not actually explicitly allowing or disallowing any use. Ultimately, my understanding is. That is the CEO's job when it comes time to fill those spaces.
Pretty much, but, but at the same time, I think that. You know. We can, we, isn't it within our purview though to say whether these uses are appropriate or not, consistent with the zoning ordinance or the, whatever we call it?
I think expressing that opinion is, and, and I think that's what we're doing in the language that we're selecting by consciously including the one residential unit and six professional offices. Because that enables a conversation or an argument in the future where the code enforcement officer can point back to this as somebody indicated and said, this was the city's understanding at at this time.
And and, and in fact, this is what the applicant is asking for. So anyhow, are we ready for to proceed to a vote where a motion is made and seconded?
Yes.
All in favor, please?
Hi.
Patrick, oh, right. Okay, thank you. Now, at this point in a regular in-person meeting, I would suggest a um, a recess, but Zoom doesn't do that well. So the next item on the agenda. So final plan review for a major use subdivision. Use site development, I'm sorry, entitled Gilpatrick Solar LLC for Brian Stare. The proposal is to construct a nineteen point eight one acre solar energy facility on a one hundred and twenty six point eight six acre parcel located on Gilpatrick Road, tax map fifty eight lot fifteen. All the property is located in the rural and urban zones. Someone representing the applicant, please.
Hi, John. Chris Byers here. Dale Knapp, how are you folks?
Okay, and uh, are you surviving well?
No.
I'm afraid all we can do is extend our condolences, but um,
Yes.
it's beyond our authority to try and fix the situation.
If that question is related to the fact that we always put these guys at the end of our agendas.
No, it's it's good, it's good. Sorry, we don't have a sepia tone on our on our camera. So Rick like that, yeah. Um, yeah, thanks for having us. We have kind of just a really quick presentation to follow up on what's been discussed to date. Um, I'll grab my screen real quick here. In a second, but anyway, I guess just a quick summary. We've been working with Carrie on uh, some final items, um, including getting the MHPC letter submitted, uh, as well as the core permit submitted. Uh, to date, it's, I looked through her uh, final TRT report that she provided, and it seemed like those were the only open-ended items. Everything else at this point would be uh, conditions that would be applied um, later on, uh, at at the time of issuance of building permit. So I guess we're here just to field any final questions that the planning board might have about the project.
Now, does the planning board have questions or comments on the project? Don't let them off so easy, folks. Our reputation is at stake.
Yeah, I would say Chris said he was having a hard time, so maybe they feel bad for him. But I'm having a great day, so I'm happy to field any questions you guys might have.
We've just exhausted ourself on Union Street, so, you know, that's one of the benefits of going last.
Oh, all right.
Well, I have a question then, since you'll answer any questions.
Oh, God.
The the often ended question is why? You can just go off on anything.
Okay, well, um. Why everything?
Well, why this project? We're trying to move Maine towards a renewable energy future. As we shift transportation and home heating to heat pumps, we're keen on increasing the amount of renewable generation getting pumped into the grid. That's why Gil.
You're getting pumped up on this, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's um.
So if there are, let me just open the public hearing. Nate and Carrie, Carrie, do you have any members of the public who wish to speak?
I don't have any comment.
No comments on Zoom either.
Ellen, I'll I'll throw out a question for Chris. And it's just general information, uh, you may not have been here when, uh, just before the meeting. I was asking Steve Salisbury about a project, a solar phone that he presented down in Trenton just recently that was approved. And I just found it interesting that they 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 were using double-sided solar panels and panels that moved to go with the sun. And this is the first time I've heard something like that, you know, just kind of curious. Is that more what we're going to see in the future or how do you make the decision on yours are fixed, one-sided?
Well, some of it has to do with the site, the slopes on the site. Trackers need a really flat surface, and so if you have some topography, you don't want to have to, you know, remove a lot of material and kind of regrade a very large area. Uh, but I think we will see, you know, more bifacial panels is what those two-sided panels are called and and trackers. Um, there's a couple of facilities just north of Augusta, you know, big, flat fields that don't require a lot of alteration. But if you've got some slope and you're going to try and cut that down to flatten it out, you know, that doesn't really fit with the natural landscape incredibly well. And it it's so it's permitting issues, land disturbance as well as as cost and a lack of site suitability, Chris, I.
Yeah, I mean, maybe maybe about a third of the projects that we're working on are trackers. I think they're predominantly the fixed tilt that you're seeing here. And if if that catches popularity, I think we'll continue to see that just as the, you know, basically you get more power per square inch out of a tracker project, right? They're they're facing east in the morning and then during the during the day, they are eventually facing west.
And so in this region, once there are a few of those systems that are installed, I think um, operator confidence may increase. Because of snow, we get a lot of snow here, and so some of those manufacturers are a bit nervous kind of having that equipment here. You know, obviously, the fixed uh, projects are proven technology in this environment. Uh, trackers are kind of new here, and so there may be a little bit of risk tied to that, but we're definitely seeing them permitted and built.
Yep.
And generally, um, on the trackers, I mean, generally speaking, how much more power did that produce?
Um, about fifteen percent.
Fifteen.
Yep.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, no problem.
So. What would the board like to do at this point?
I'll make a motion that we approve the the final plan review for major use site development titled Gilpatrick Solar LLC for Ryan Stare. The proposal is to construct a nineteen point eight one acre solar energy facility on a one hundred twenty six point eight six acre parcel located on the Gilpatrick Road. Tax map fifty eight lot fifteen, all the subject property is located in a rural and urban zones.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? In my case, all in favor, please?
All right.
Well, uh, is your day getting better now?
So much better. I'm gonna also go get some dinner. It'll be great. I really, really appreciate it, guys. You know, uh, I think we mentioned this last time, but you know, it's really nice working with you. You've got a great board here. You guys ask great questions. I'm sure that the people that live in Ellsworth are glad to have you guys, you know, running the the rules and regs for your town.
Yeah, we're really, you guys are one of my favorite planning boards. I'm kind of sad that we're, we, maybe we should do some more projects in Ellsworth.
Yeah.
I like this.
How about a nice fancy certificate? Appreciating us that we can.
Well, do you have the one you gave Mike? We could use that as a template.
Yeah, I was surprised to see Mike still on the call here. Maybe he just uh, couldn't give it up.
This is Swan's song, right? Well, it it could be that he's just so addicted to being at planning board meetings that he has to ease himself out of it now and go. He could always listen in and come in on the public hearing, right? Yes, of course.
Maybe we'll do that next time.
I don't know if everybody's, I don't know if everybody's sound enough, but you might want to introduce Elena as well. I was going to ju- do that if she would unmute herself.
Hello.
Hello. This is Elena Pykott. She is our new city planner. She was an assistant planner a number of years ago with, well, Michelle Daniel was planner. And I am very happy to have her back. And uh, I think you will like working with her as well. At least I do hope so.
That's great.
Nice to meet you, Elena.
Nice to meet you. Carrie mentioned that you'd be on, so um, thanks again, Carrie, for all your help. Um, you've been a really super communicator and um, done a great job with your with your work.
But Carrie will still be here.
You're very welcome.
Oh, yes, yes. No, sorry, that was not in memoriam. I'm just making sure she gets acknowledgement. Well, thanks again. Good night.
And do you wish to address anything, Elena?
Well, just happy to be here and um, I held my tongue this this month, this evening. But um, at our next meeting, I'll be more active. And as far as we know right now, I don't think we expect any applications to come in next week. So we may not have a meeting for March, um, which would give me a nice chance to get settled. But we'll let you know.
And I know all of us will be very, very sad not to meet next month, but we're adults, we can handle.
Yeah, bittersweet.
Could I, could I propose a a workshop of sorts? Um, we had one workshop that I was part of. I'm a new alternate, um, and I found it extremely rewarding and helpful and.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. If we don't have any other business.
Um, what, do you have any particular subject in mind, Molly?
Big question. Can I get back to you on that?
We'll get back to Elena.
Will do.
Unless unless it is so far out that my opinion is important. Oh, I I have one final note, too. Um, you know, we talked on the, you know, there was a, we're going to be preparing a letter uh, to uh, the city of fathers and mothers um, in support of the redoing the comprehensive plan. So, you know, everybody kind of sign on to that, and I'll be drafting a letter uh, for your review in the next couple of days, and I'll send that around, and then it'll come from John, though. So we're on, we're on track to do that. Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, adjournment, please? Bye. See you, kids.